I forget what they call it. My sister went upstate, she's got a house in Adirondack.
Oh, okay.
So they went up there for that.
Oh, that's good. Good for her. Plus an excuse to get away, right?
Yeah, exactly.
I have it, thank you. Ooh, silence.
Ooh, quiet.
Now, seven twenty-nine.
We can't stop this before seven thirty.
I know, I understand.
The air conditioner is on.
I hope that's AC and not...
Last time that happened, it was an earthquake. It literally happened at the exact time of the earthquake. It turned on and Chris was like, "Is someone home with you?" And I'm like, "No, that's an earthquake."
You called it right away.
I learned something in school.
Hi Fred. Oh, I was gonna say, whoa! Ten se-- all right, thank you Fred. All right.
Is it fifteen seconds?
No, it's ten seconds, but he said ten minutes.
Oh.
That's an oh!
Ten minutes, we're gonna have to take a nap.
I could use one.
See, it was right at seven thirty. Look at the TV.
Yeah, look at that.
There it was, thousand Indians.
Can you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God in the resolve with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you and good evening. Tonight is Tuesday, I was about to say February, man, am I out of it. April ninth, it's seven thirty, oh, seven thirty-one. See, see what happens?
That's it.
It's seven thirty-one. We came, we had an executive session where we discussed committee appointments and just a little reception outside just before this for our recently elected officials. Before we begin the meeting, we have to officially swear them in.
Swear them in.
Or swear at them. All right, we'll do this in alphabetical order, so we'll go...
David and Susan.
What? Alphabetical order, my last name!
Yes.
Susan's on the left here, so I'm gonna... All right.
All right, so where are you?
Right here, I guess, and you can raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution...
Of the United States...
Of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of New York...
And the Constitution of the State of New York...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties...
Of the Office of Village Trustee...
Of the Office of Village Trustee...
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Almost forgot that part. All right, so go ahead and sign.
Hon, you know I take that seriously.
Yeah. All right, congratulations.
Thank you so much! Thank you.
I do!
Say, "I do," with David.
Can't she?
I'm not for a channel.
All right, thank you.
All right, David, your turn. He doesn't wanna come up after us.
Steven, you can pose with him too.
I'm gonna demand it, equal time!
There'll be rumors all over town.
No, I don't want to come with David.
Steven, you're cheating on me with her.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
There's too much rivalry here for them. We may need a separator for the picture. It's only, it's only the first, it's only the second week of the season.
The season has started.
Thank you.
Underway.
It's underway.
That was a tough game, David.
Anyway, it was fun. That's what it's all about, ain't it?
You know.
Steven, why?
Team Blair, how easy. I like a good fight.
Your turn. So if you... All right, I do solemnly swear...
More money, I wanna spend.
I state your name.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York...
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge...
I think next year, we're gonna be going over the two percent cap.
The duties of the Office of Village Trustee.
You think what?
I think we'll be going over the two percent cap.
According to the best of my ability.
Next year.
According to the best of my ability.
We're good enough.
Exactly.
Congratulations.
Every so often, you're gonna have to do it. There'll be articles about it. But you know, makes you feel like you're doing a good job. So this is the...
Invisible ink?
This is right, it disappears in ten minutes. Let's move away from the podium.
How much more your tax is gonna be?
It's crazy.
No, no, if you go over the two and a half percent.
Right.
It's peanuts.
Right.
Compared with the... It's really serious.
All right, I wanna picture the three of us, that's what I want.
'Cause I'm, otherwise I'm going...
I'm going for the three of us.
I want him!
We are, right? I don't know.
Is this where the three of us announce that we changed the name of the village to Pfizerville?
Thank you.
It's called Pfizerville.
It's a good thing they said yes, otherwise we had those cookies for nothing. All right, so, um...
Oh, wait.
Moving on to...
Say goodbye.
One with everybody this way?
Do you wanna do...
If you don't minds?
Do you wanna do your Luke Eric imitation?
This isn't really government, this is just for you, I get it.
Right.
Watch your finger.
Okay.
The humless man alive.
Luckiest man.
Steven? Since you may not make it more than a week, do you wanna do your Luke Eric today?
No, no, I'm the happiest man.
Hi, dear. Hi, you.
Good luck, Steven.
He likes his alone time. Who said that?
I didn't say that.
I understand.
Clearly, the sugar from the cookies is getting to us.
No, no, they're all punch from, yes, punchy from yesterday.
All right, we've had a long, yes, we've had a long few, twenty-four hours. For those who don't know, we were here last night in a marathon session for the second budget session, which we have now gotten through two budget workshops, which brings us nicely to our presentation of the...
Did you wanna do that, or you wanna move ahead the others?
Yeah, we can, we can go. Yeah, you're right, okay, fine.
It's up to you, I don't care.
All right, so we're gonna, we'll hold off on the budget presentation because I know everyone is so...
Yeah, it's wrapped.
Wrapped and, and so anxiously awaiting that. We'll move straight into Resolution Number One. Consider a request for an exemption extension of Chapter 158, Section 2.1 of the Village Code regarding a seasonal leaf blower ban for Enclave.
Whereas on April eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, the Board of Trustees approved a local law enacting a seasonal gas-powered leaf blower ban from May first to September thirtieth, which begins this May first, two thousand twenty-four. And under the Village Code, properties with five acres or more can apply to the board for a full or partial extension or exemption. And whereas an application has been distributed to the eligible properties and also placed on the website. And whereas in December of two thousand twenty-three, Representatives of the Enclave HOA submitted an application for exemption from the seasonal ban on gas-powered leaf blowers. Now therefore be it resolved that in consideration of the intent of the local law as well as considerations raised in the application from Representatives of the Enclave HOA, hereby either approves, denies, or approves with conditions the request for an exemption of the Village Code and any conditions would be listed in the resolution.
Thank you, Chris, and we'll hold off on the motions. Do we have Representatives for, I see, Mr. Gelfarb, you are...
I told our landscaper...
If you don't...
Make it, sorry, I told our landscaper to make it at seven forty-five because I was...
Okay, we can go, well, we can hold off if you want, we can go on to other...
But I can start my own little show and if, at least we'll get, we'll get partway done.
David, I'm sure you can filibuster for fifteen minutes.
We don't, we don't wanna filibuster. Yeah, I mean...
Um, I don't wanna, uh, do we need to put away the books by which the Honorable Board has been sworn in?
Oh, yeah, you can just hang it to me. Thank you.
Congratulations, everyone being sworn in.
Oh, yes, you've been asked to speak into the mic.
Right, yes.
Testing.
Good.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Klein and members of the Board of Trustees. My name, as you know, is David Gelfarb. I am an attorney with the firm of Moss and Kalish in New York City and a seventeen-year former Rybrook resident. I represent the Enclave and Rybrook Homeowners Association. The Association is applying pursuant to Village Code Section 158-2.1E for exemption from the village's May first through September thirtieth limitation on the use of gas-powered leaf blowers. With me soon will be Mr. Valerio Saglioco, the landscaper for the Enclave. And presently here is Mr. Lee Freund, the president and a member of the Board of Directors of the Enclave Homeowners Association. By way of background, the entire parcel of what is known as the Enclave encompasses approximately fifteen and one-half acres. The Enclave is located at the intersection of Anderson Hill Road and King Street. The main entrance is on Anderson Hill Road and there is an emergency access road along King Street. Approximately thirteen acres are located in Rybrook. The remaining two and a half acres are in Greenwich. That portion is subject to a permanent conservation easement. The Enclave does not maintain that area and we will not address it further. A portion of the Enclave in Rybrook has thirty homes and extensive common areas, including unpaved grass areas, detention ponds, wetlands, and roadways. As you may know, the two primary roads in the Enclave, Carroll Court and David Lane, are not dedicated to the village and are thus privately maintained. The Association provides landscaping services for all of the thirty homes as well as the common areas. The landscaping company for the Enclave is Moreno Landscape Garden Designs Limited, which is based in Mamaroneck. The company is known in the community as the Moreno Group. Mr. Val Saglioco is in charge of the work done at the Enclave and he is also president of the Moreno Group. Just for the record, the written application that we submitted listed a different landscaper, Di Bartolo Landscaping of the Bronx. Moreno Group is now the landscaper for the Enclave. Mr. Saglioco will be speaking about the following issues: the work his firm does for the Enclave, the machinery his firm uses, the features of gas and electric-powered leaf blowers and landscaping equipment, charging and battery issues, the availability of electric equipment, and cost issues. Of course, he will be happy to answer questions from the board. The Enclave looks forward to being as green and sustainable as is feasible. As part of its commitment, the Enclave has been reviewing the feasibility of and considering the use of electric push blowers, weed whackers, and push mowers, among other implements. There's also been consideration of use in the area at or around the entrance gate and its gatehouse for the charging of battery-powered equipment. Based upon prior applications that have been made to this board, including by other of my clients, we understand that the board will at least consider granting a two-year exemption. The Enclave would like to propose that in exchange for two-year exemption, it will commit that for all thirty homes, it will use battery-powered equipment only on all walkways and patios. We anticipate that this will help reduce noise in the vicinity of homes and homeowners and further the goals of your legislation. At the same time, it will allow traditional equipment to be used on areas such as roadways, fields, and detention basins while the Association and its landscaper prepare to meet the challenges of the new law. If the board has any questions, I would be pleased to try and answer. If not, I expect to be able to turn this over to Mr. Saglioco soon. And after he has finished speaking, I may ask Mr. Freund to address you. If the board has any questions for me after Mr. Saglioco and possibly Mr. Freund speak, I would be glad to address them. On behalf of the Enclave, thank you for your time and consideration of this application.
All right, thank you. I know we're still missing the representative. Makes it hard to proceed, I think. And I guess the question, the question I would have, you know, if you're asking for a two-year exemption, it was mentioned the, the patios and the walkways? You know, I've, I've, you know, does that include the driveways as well?
Not really, no, no. What, what we're anticipating, what we're able, sorry. What we're able to, to submit is, is at this point is the walkways and the, and the patios. Which of course have quite a good amount of landscaping and leaf blowing attendant to them.
Do we have, I mean, do we have questions? It's tough without the...
No, it's tough without the landscaper. We can move on to the next one.
Yeah, maybe, maybe what we'll do is, well, Chris, can we move on to... All right, so if you wanna just hold off a little bit, we'll move on to the next one. And then we'll come back once, once landscaper's here. All right, so while we table that, we're gonna move on to Resolution Number Two. Consider a request for an extension exemption Chapter 158, Section 2.1 of the Village Code regarding a seasonal leaf blower ban for King Field HOA.
Okay, once again, the, in April, the Board adopted a local law. I'm just gonna summarize it. Properties over five acres can ask for a fuller partial extension or exemption. The Enclave, sorry, the King Field HOA has submitted an application for exemption of the requirements and now therefore be it resolved that in consideration of the intent of the local law as well as considerations raised in the application, the Representatives from King Field HOA, the Village of Rybrook, Board of Trustees either will deny, approve, or approve with conditions the request for the exemption or extension and they may or may not add conditions within that.
Thank you, Chris, and again, we'll hold off on any type of motion. Second, until we know what we're doing. So we have Representative from King Field.
So, my name is Anthony Shandra. I am here on behalf of Landscape Management Systems. We are the landscape contractor in charge of maintaining King Field. Representative from Property Management was supposed to be with me here today, but he unfortunately was under the weather. First of all, thank you, everyone.
Well, then we prefer he's not here.
Yeah, you know, fewer people in line, the better, I think. Of course, I've got a tough act to follow, but, um... So, I'm here on behalf of, obviously, the HOA and my own business. The battery packs on battery-powered leaf blowers only last about forty minutes. And though I, as a homeowner, am fully behind leaf blower bans because frankly, no one wants to hear that droning on in their ear all day while they're trying to relax on a nice summer weekday. It's just simply isn't practical for large multi-acre sites, especially newly developed ones such as King Field. Even if we were to switch to electric-powered blowers, even all electric-powered equipment, the amount of power delivered by what is currently commercially available in electric blowers, it's just not strong enough. We would be out there for twice as long. So the homeowners would be incurring ridiculous, a ridiculous increase in maintenance costs. And frankly, they should be hearing, though it might be slightly less noise from the electric blowers, they would be hearing it more often. I was not aware that I had to come with such a well-prepared speech. I figured this would be more of a Q and A situation. You know, I've, I've been doing this my whole life. I was born into the landscaping industry. My father passed away last year and I've adopted the business now. And we could try our best to manage on battery-powered blowers, but the inconvenience and the financial burden it would put not only on us, but on the homeowners association, the residents there. It would just be very, this is such a drastically fast change to the status quo. We need time to adjust. Now ideally, we would be filing for an exemption because behind us is SUNY Purchase and the woods. On the other side is, what was that, a golf course that was abandoned? Dorlar Arrowood? Dorlar Arrowood, in front of us is the...
Blind Brook Club.
What's that?
The Blind Brook Club.
Well, Blind Brook's a little ways away.
Yeah, yeah, and the corporate park.
Corporate park.
There are no other residents of Rybrook who would be disturbed by any noise we create. And the one hour it would take us during the summer months, during the ban months, to just blow grass clippings and that sort of thing. Whereas the three hours it would take if we were forced to use an electric blower, I, you know, it's one of those things, rip the Band-Aid off. I'd rather hear more noise for less time than less noise for more. So I wasn't sure how this process works. This is my first sort of town hall meeting. If this was a question...
Sure, so, so the first thing I would say is that noise is kind of secondary and the reason why we're, why we passed this legislation, legislation really has to do with emissions and the fact that, you know, this is, this is really the way that, you know, this, or certainly this area is going. That, you know, we're not the first community to pass a legisla, pass legislation like this. You know, I don't know if you do business in other communities where they have, you know, there's, there's much stricter bans. You know, even like was just said, even across King Street. That there are permanent bans on, and certain municipalities have banned all leaf blowers, whether they be gas or electric, during, during those times. And again, this is really just for the period of time from May through the end of September, when it's not leaf season. You know, knowing that, you know, the, the higher-powered gas blowers maybe need to, may need to be used during that time. You know, certainly, you know, we are well aware of the limitations. This is probably, you know, our eleventh or twelfth of these that we've heard because there are some larger properties in the village. And we've heard varying degrees of commitment to electric. You know, I would say that, you know, for a large property, typically we will grant an exemption, but it's, you know, it's really only gonna be for a year. We expect there to be significant changes made in that year. We understand that the technology is not necessarily where people would like it to be. But the technology exists and it's, you know, this, again, it's, this isn't necessarily about noise, especially in an HOA where people are choosing, I mean, if the HOA decided they don't want any leaf blowers, they could decide that. And then they would just have, you know, whatever landscaping company they hire would have to, you know, use rakes or something else. So it's, you know, this is, this is more about, you know, the emissions created by these two-stroke engines and by the leaf blowers. It's also about the noise and trying to do our part as a board to limit their, their use. You know, I think, again, you know, we understand with the larger properties and the HOAs, you know, the cost incurred and, and the amount of time it takes to clear these larger spaces as opposed to an individual house. But again, you know, this isn't, you know, this isn't something that's gonna go away. This is something that, and, and I guess I'll open this up to other... I don't wanna take your point away.
I'm just curious as to how many non-gas leaf blowers you have and whether they're being used at all now and whether you intend to use them.
How many non-glass, non-gas blowers do we have currently?
Yeah.
One small one that we use for small patio clean-offs when we're doing little one-off jobs. The issue being, they simply don't run long enough and if it becomes, if the, you know, the origin of this whole motion and law on the town's part is concern over emissions and, you know, greenhouse gas waste, the battery packs for these things only last a year. The process of lithium mining is incredibly wasteful and generates more CO2 than a leaf blower ever will in its lifetime. Not to mention, like I said, the battery packs only last a year or two before they're due for replacement. They're non-recyclable. So, not to say it, it's a moot point, but it's kind of, what's the expression?
Pick your poison.
Yes, thank you. At any rate, we're not asking necessarily for a full-on exemption because obviously in time, we could learn to manage and adjust our maintenance practices to accommodate. Being that it's just such a drastic change to the status quo from what we and every other landscaper in the state's been doing for years, we would certainly appreciate a couple of years of an extension just until we can get our bearings on and essentially just learn how to maintain this place with only low-power electric blowers that we can only use for a couple of minutes at a time. Now, we're working both internally and with the HOA to sort of figure out how to make that possible. But to do so immediately would put a severe burden on both us, the HOA, and frankly, the landscape itself.
I am not personally a great fan of more than one-year extensions and my concern is that I envision you coming back here a year from now and making the exact same speech. Nothing will have changed within the way you operate your company or work in this area.
Well, the matter is, you know, the equipment comes and goes. If you buy a new, brand-new backpack blower, it's only gonna last a couple of years. So as it becomes a matter of just sort of out with the old and in with the new and as, you know, I have a friend who was a, a, he works for a John Deere Realtor and so he deals a lot in electric blowers now because he works in the Lower Westchester area where a lot of these bans are taking place. The technology's getting better every day. Now, will it be perfect? Will I get the same cubic foot output out of an electric blower next year as I will out of my gas one now? Probably not. But at least it'll give us, you know, two years would be a good amount of time. It'll give us one entire season to sort of establish and go through the season with the mindset of, okay, now how can we do this differently if we only had a light-power leaf blower to manage? The second year, we could put it into practice and, you know, actually get it to work. But, you know, we're talking about a very large property. I think King Field is something like thirteen or fifteen acres. The houses are all tightly packed. It would just be to try and swing this on a dime, to just try and, you know, figure out how we keep this place clean and orderly and keep the residents happy and, you know, not have to drop ten thousand dollars on new equipment overnight for us. Or if we had to pass that along to the homeowners.
Can you share with us what communities you work in?
Excuse me?
Can you share with us what communities you work in?
Currently, King Field. We maintain Indian Harbor House in Greenwich, which is more of an apartment building. We formerly have maintained Palmer Hill, which is in Stamford, another very similar, I think, hundred-and-twenty-unit condo development. Kenzet in Darien, Connecticut. Winding Ridge, town is escaping me. Currently, as far as large maintenance, large community maintenance contracts, it's Indian Harbor House in Greenwich and King Field.
If I could just make a few comments, if you don't mind. So I'm not a board member, I'm the village administrator, so I don't have a vote in it. So just wanna point out a couple of things. As the mayor said, it is a seasonal leaf blower ban, as we said. So the heavy leaf seasons, you can use gas-powered anywhere in the village. So that's not, that's not the issue there. In terms of doing it on short notice, you know, just to be aware, the board approved this local law a year ago, in April of last year. And the whole goal was to try to give people time to come up with a plan to try to make some step, positive steps, both for residents and for commercial properties. And just in terms of guidance, where the board has, in the past, applications have provided more, longer extensions or longer exemptions, you know, they're looking for some type of movement towards electric leaf blowers. So where some other applications have had one-year or two-year extensions, a lot of that is dependent on how much inroads they're making on electric or commitments to using electric in certain areas. So when you think about the law, a lot of it has to do, whether it's emissions or noise, a lot of it's focused on, focused on the residential areas. So for instance, a lot of properties and HOAs have focused more on using electric in and around... So, for instance, a lot of properties and HOAs have focused more on using electric in and around the homes. Because that's where the noise would be more disturbing or the emissions would be more disturbing. So, where some people have committed saying, well, you know, we'll use more electric in and around the home areas. Uh, whether it be driveways or patios or walkways or the grass areas, you know, those are a thing, different people have proposed different steps. Uh, depending on the development, sometimes it's a little bit different. So, just to give you a little guidance on what's been done in other applications where the boards had much more, um, they really want to see some steps forward towards the compliance with the law over time.
Okay.
Yeah, and I would, and to, to Chris's point, I would say that, you know, this, this was passed a year ago. So, and, and our, you know, the reason we didn't enforce it last year was we, we figured that was too short of a time for people to make that quick switch, like you're suggesting. You know, unfortunately, you know, I hate to say it this way, but it seems like you're pretty behind. Um, because almost every other application that's come behind, before us has, has committed to at least partial use of electric blowers. We understand the technology. We understand where it is. Um, for every other homeowner who doesn't have a property over five acres in the village of Rybrook, they can't use them. They can't have gas-powered leaf blowers during the, during that off-season, the, the summertime. Um, you know, I, I for one would not be inclined to do anything more than a, a one-year, uh, extension. Because of the property, we understand, and so we'd be willing to do a, do a one-year, I think. I mean, or at least myself, I am. Um, I can't speak for the rest of the board, you know, but I, but I would say that I will not be inclined next year to grant the same extension.
That's fair.
If we don't see movement. Because the intention of the, the, the intention of the legislation is to eliminate the use of gas-powered leaf blowers in the village of Rybrook, period. That's the intention of the legislation. Um, in the, you know, we understand that during leaf season, these might be necessary. And we ourselves as a village are using a good number of electric leaf blowers on our courts, on our tennis courts, on our basketball court.
And parks, in the park areas.
And parks, in our parks.
Which are a lot of acres.
Yeah, which are a lot of acres. And, and so we, we understand the limitations. We understand where the technology is going. We understand that this is really becoming the norm in this area. That this is, you know, that, that a lot of communities have gone this route and we are one of them. Um, so.
We appreciate any extension they're willing. So, last year was tough for my family, for the HOA. My father died of cancer at the end of last year. So, though the resolution was passed last year, I don't think anyone, granted, we are, since we are the ones maintaining it, which weren't in that headspace. I would appreciate, as just a small local business owner who's maintaining this property, any extension you're willing to give. So, we can both save the funds to, you know, build, it'll cost us about ten thousand dollars to buy as many leaf blowers as we need to just maintain just through regular summer maintenance. So, any extension you're willing to give to help us bridge that gap, we greatly appreciate.
Any other questions from the board, comments?
No, I think, I think you talked about giving an extension with, with next year showing some more progress on buying, right?
Can I have a motion and second for a one-year exemption?
I moved second.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Yeah, I, I'd, I'd say just, you know, for next year, we'd, we'd like to see movement. Um.
That's fine. If they want to double back on us and, you know, see where we're at and, you know, especially in the summer months, it's really just a matter of blowing grass clippings. It's also just a matter of, as a landscaping company, it's very hard to make a large investment in the spring before, because we essentially spend three months not making money and then have to spend a bunch to get the season rolling. But even if they wanted to stop back on us in a year and say, hey, you know, what have you done? And by then, hopefully, we'll have some of our.
Right. And again, you know, we understand the limitations and that's why we're, you know, have been granting these extensions uh, to the, to the larger properties where it's allowed by the legislation itself. All right. So, I think we have a motion and second. Greg?
And before you read it, just so, just to be clear, the resolution's going to read that they approve an extension through October first of two thousand twenty-four. And what that does is it's now not in effect until next, the following May. So, the one, even, it sounds, it doesn't sound like a year, but it's a year.
Right.
It's the, it's the one we, and the idea there is between October and, and the end of April, that's your time to come back and tell, say what's going on.
Okay. Greg?
Trusty Epstein?
Yes.
Trusty Fisher?
Yes.
Trusty Heiser?
Yes.
Trusty Morlino? Yes. Mayor Klein?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Great evening.
All right. Back to our previous resolution, which we have not motioned or seconded yet. You don't have to read your, you don't have to read your letter again. It's on video, we can all.
Just one second. Here's Val. Heard the letter was good. Sorry to miss that.
We got started a little earlier than you were told.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm running late. Um, so, thank you and good evening. I apologize I was late. Um, we've been, uh, I'll give you a little bit of background. So, I'm third-generation landscape gardener, landscape designer. Our company was founded in nineteen fifty-two by my grandfather based out of Mamaroneck. And, uh, he radiated from there. And we've, we've grown over the years and now we own nurseries and, um, we do a lot of different, uh, slices of the landscape pie, so to say. So, ever since I was born, we, uh, I was kind of put in a truck, essentially. So, like, my first pair of work boots were this big. Um, it's really in my blood. So, we, we, we try to really be on the forefront of all things landscape in, in the area and in the, in the community. So, about three and a half years ago, um, we, to my knowledge, were the first, uh, fully-electric lawn team. Right? We had a, um, all different-sized lawn mowers, uh, and blowers, weed whackers and trimmers. And I, I established an entirely electric team. Um, the catch was that, um, the batteries lasted twenty minutes full throttle across the board. Um, and I said, well, guys, I want to do this. I really want to get this done. How are we going to do this? So, I, I got into the truck and it was a box, it's a box truck. And the, the guys rigged up, uh, a system to try to charge the batteries while the truck was on. Um, the other problem was that, uh, it worked for a bit. And then we realized that the traveling throughout the day, that the truck would be on, charging the batteries was not enough. So, we were then leaving our truck running to try to charge the batteries of our green equipment. Um, so at that point, we, I said, you know, and mind you, this was three and a half years ago. So, this is before Greenwich started ma- Larchmont, Mamaroneck, White Plains went in hard this year. I don't know if you know about that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so it was all before this whole wave started. So, we've been really, you know, I, we partake in, you know, we sponsor the Mamaroneck Monarch Butterfly Festival, uh, which has a lot of green equipment sponsorships. We, um, I was, uh, two and a half weeks ago, I attended, uh, Greenwich, Connecticut's, uh, forum about green equipment. And they're kind of, the wetland, Alexandra Moss, who's on the wetland committee, was pushing this on, you know, on, um, as far as an agenda, and they're trying to really pass in Greenwich these, um, these laws. Um, so we're very in tune with what's going on. We're in tune with Larchmont, the Mamaroneck, Scarsdale, with all of it. Um, by and large, I, I don't think it's, it's a bad thing. I think that unfortunately, the technology's not there. And, um, I do think that when it comes to properties such as the Enclave, it's rather, um, it's rather difficult to really get, uh, your job done correctly. So, and what I mean by that is like, if you have, I don't know what you all do as a profession, but imagine at the end of the day, doing, doing, working hard all day and doing your job and then looking back and your job's not done. That's kind of what it makes us feel like when we're trying, you know, we're, you know, we're, we're trying to accomplish a task with not the correct, um, equipment. Correct meaning powerful enough and having the technology behind it. Um, so, you know, basically, in short, um, what I'd like to say is that, uh, I, I do think that if, if possible, uh, the Enclave should have some sort of, I don't know what the right word is, if it's a, an, uh, an exception or some sort of leniency towards, uh, what this, uh, what this rule is.
Called exemption or extension?
Yeah.
Either or.
Could you clarify again, or just summarize again, what you are prepared to do with electric equipment at this time?
Yeah, um, I'm, when, um,
If you don't mind, we've, a microphone, sorry. Because these are also recorded and televised, so we just need to.
Leaf rowing president of Enclave HOA. Um, we propose patios and walkways, right? I think, I think that's a really nice, happy medium for the time being until we, we get, you know, hopefully, the technology will push a little bit forward the next year. But, um, you know, we'll, we'll be prepared when it, when it does. And the ask is for a two-year exemption.
All right. So, um, you know, we, we certainly commend you in, in the efforts that you've made. Um, and like you said, you, if you, if you're doing business in some of these other communities, you know how much stricter some of these legislations can be than what we have. Um, my, you know, certainly, again, you know, you, we've seen that we ex, we grant extensions. Um, we, that, that's the reason the, the law was designed this way. Was because we understand the larger properties that, you know, this is, that, you know, and, and, and a lot of, and really, to be honest, um, when we designed, uh, this legislation, we based it off of what other municipalities were doing, where they did grant some exemptions for these larger properties. Um, and so I, I don't think any of us have a problem. I, I personally would be more inclined to do a one-year just because, you know, I've, I've actually been in the Enclave a few times and, you know, the patios and the walkways really aren't that much of a, you know, there's, there's not much patio and walkway. It's, you know, um, I think if you were proposing also the driveways, I'd be a little more inclined, um, personally. Um, but, you know, just patios and walkways, I kind of see it, you know, because we do understand, you know, as I was just saying, um, which you may not have been here for before, you know, we do understand the limitations of the technology. But we understand that it's also making strides every day, every year, that, that it really is getting there. We also, that's why we didn't go the route that some other municipalities have gone, where they've, where, where they've done either, you know, no, I've, I've seen some municipalities go no gas-powered leaf blowers, period. All year, year-round, that's it. Other municipalities have said, all right, no leaf blowers in this off-season, whether they be gas or electric. So, you know, we understand that, you know, certain, you know, Rybrook residents expect a certain look. Um, they expect that they're going to have the technology to do it. That's why we went the route we did. Um, but again, you know, personally, and especially I'm looking right now just at a, an, you know, aerial photograph of Enclave. Um, and really, the patios and walkways are, are, are minimal.
Yeah. How long do you spend at the Enclave and what day do you go? Is it multiple days? I mean, what's the time commitment?
Um, so it's, no. So, we have a large crew, so we're able to do, to make it swifter than most.
What does a large crew sound like?
Um, I'd say ten, for that property, about ten, uh, ten employees for a couple hours. Two to three.
Once a week, you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Got the questions, comments?
No. I, I'm still, you know, a point that the mayor made before, which is that we passed this legislation a year ago. So, in essence, you've had a year exemption already, just by the nature of the legislation. And as a result of that, I am not inclined to go more than one year on another exemption. So, I just want you to understand where I'm coming from.
Yeah, and it's not that we're saying no. I mean, it's, you know, you know, it's, but, you know, I think the, you know, the, the idea of the legislation is to eventually, hopefully, get us there and hopefully not in that long of a time period. To get it where the, the, the larger properties in the village are doing the same thing that the homeowner, the individual homeowners are required to do, which is to, in that May through end of September time period, have no gas-powered leaf blowers. Um, that's really the intention, the intent of the legislation. Um, but we, we, again, as a board, we understood in the passing of this legislation, the burden that it puts on some of the larger properties. And that's why we allowed for these exemptions within the law.
So, have, has the board of trustees been acknowledging or providing two-year exemptions?
We've done it two times, I think. Um, three times, three times in each case. Um, I would say that the, the applicants were, uh, committing to the use of electric gas, or, sorry, gas, electric gas. Electric, uh, blowers on at least, I think it's about, been about twenty-five percent of the property. Um, also instituting other electric technology as they go. So, that's really, be- because I guess we see in that, um, we see in that that they are proposing where others will be in that next year or two. So, that, that's why we've been granting the two-year.
If I may speak yet, uh, Mr. Mayor and Board, uh, of those two or three, I'm happy to say that I was two of them. I have been very fortunate so far in, in, in my, uh, in my application. So, I think the, uh, the Enclave, if, if the president is so inclined, is willing to, uh, to commit to the, uh, the driveways as well, if that will, uh, help, help the board to pass a, a two-year exemption. So, we would like to, uh, propose that to, uh, to your board.
I leave it to the board.
I mean, I'm okay with that. I feel like there's a lot of driveways there.
Yeah, there's a good amount of driveway.
I'm fine with that.
So, it'd be the walkways, the pathways, the, the patios, the walkways and the driveways.
Yes.
Bankyard.
Patios are in the rear.
Thank you.
And, and with a, with a, a goal to purchase more electric by two years from now, when you come in front of us and say,
Of course.
We did this. We, fifty percent of our equipment is electric or something, you know, I'm not saying.
We were hoping that they're.
Hundred percent. Well, we don't know how things are going to happen, but you know what I'm saying.
I'm hoping that the technology's there in two years.
Yeah.
Every time I see a Rivian truck at the Portchester train station, I say, one day that'll be me.
So, now it's going to be, so they'll do all the driveways, all the roads, that would, uh.
Go to committing with the driveways?
Patios, walkways.
Driveways, patios, walkways. Okay?
Okay.
Hey, that you're a silver-tongued devil, you persuaded me to go two years.
All right, can I get a, all right, so Chris, can you read it as amended?
Sure, absolutely. So, "Therefore, a resolved after consideration of the intent of the local laws as well as considerations raised in the application reps, from representatives of Kingfield HOA." Sorry, the Enclave, sorry. I'm on the wrong resolution. Same thing, but "Representatives of the Enclave HOA, the Board of Trustees hereby approves a request for the exemption of the local law uh, through October first, two thousand twenty-five, uh, for, with the following conditions, that patios, walkways and driveways be, um, be, that electric blowers be used on patios, walkways and driveways during this period of time."
Okay. Can I have a motion and second, please? Any other questions, comments from the board?
You guys are quick.
They are. They beat you to the punch.
They beat me.
Any other questions or comments?
No.
Greg?
Trusty Epstein?
Yes.
Trusty Fisher?
Yes.
Trusty Heiser? Trusty Morlino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes. Thank you.
And again, it's October, David, and it's October of next year because the idea is to come back sometime from October of twenty-five to May of twenty-six for, if, if another exemption is needed.
Another exemption is needed.
We do not want that.
And if it's not, that means you've gone all electric and that would be great. You're not going to stick around for the budget presentation?
Sure you will. Sure you will. There's a test afterwards.
All right. Moving back to our, to, uh, other business, um, a public, I don't think we're the public hearing, are we? Aren't we just?
It's a public hearing. It is.
This is the public hearing? This isn't setting a public?
It's, nope. We set the public hearing already.
Oh, this is the public here. Okay. A public hearing on the, uh, twenty-four, twenty-five tentative budget.
It's a need a motion to opening.
Are we approving it tonight?
No. You have to open the pub, all right. We're going to open, the board would open the public hearing. I'm going to do the presentation and then after any other public comments, you'll close the public hearing.
Okay, and then we vote on it in the next meeting?
Correct.
Okay. Can I have a motion and second, please, to open the public hearing?
Second.
I didn't even finish the sentence. That was quick. All right, Chris, you want to?
Sure. Trusty Epstein? To op, this is to open the public hearing. Trusty Epstein?
Yes.
Trusty Fisher?
Yes.
Trusty Heiser?
Yes.
Trusty Morlino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. Thank you, Chris. Please.
Okay.
Brad, you missed an important vote.
We opened the public meeting without you.
It was a close call, too.
It was a close call.
So the reason, the reason you have to close the public hearing is after, if you don't, if you keep the public hearing open, why don't we just keep it open till the next meeting, right?
Right, see, that's.
You actually have to close it, and if if you don't close it with, by, like, next week, then there's a, uh, you need a super majority to approve the budget even, it changes the rules under the village law.
Gotcha. Okay.
There's a rationale to it.
All right.
Super majority.
Which I think we have.
Yeah, we do.
I'm sure. One less issue.
We are super.
We are, we are super.
Yes, it will be a moment.
After we go over this presentation. Yeah.
I think so, yeah. So no changes, baby.
No, no changes. Just sit here and watch the show.
I've just got a lot going on.
Really?
Lawrence, do you wanna join them?
Maybe it's the tea. Maybe my tea.
Could have a minion up there?
See, Lawrence, this is why when you step away from the podium.
Too many cooks in the kitchen.
That's why I'm backing away.
That's why I love technology.
Right. Based on last night's conversation, I think they're just gonna blame the server.
Yes.
Yeah.
Maybe you need to use a gas-powered computer.
That's a good point.
This is, this is last night's bill.
Cheap.
I know, I should've had more salad. I'm sorry about that. I would've gotten more coffsalads. Last time I got coffsalad, they had nothing.
There is, there is, it's.
There is, there's, there's a lot of bread and.
Is there any sunflower bread left?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Go quick.
Anybody want anything?
No.
We're good. Don't eat the tuna, but there is chicken, too.
In the fridge.
I got mayonnaise in there. I'm allergic. Wow. I'm actually not, I made that.
I know. I used to say it also.
You eat things with mayonnaise? You do. You eat things with mayonnaise.
Yeah, I just don't like it as a, I don't mind it in tuna or something mixed in, but if it's heavy, or if it's like slathered on a sandwich.
We lost somebody. We lost Stephanie.
She went to go get some bread.
She'll be back in twenty seconds.
Yeah, she'll be back, she'll be back.
She was anticipating your presentation.
Do you need more coffee? Is that what you said? It's only two and a half hours, so, you know, it's not too bad.
Find it?
That's all right.
Good.
There you go.
Did you bring everyone, Stephanie?
I asked if anybody wanted. I said no. I was gonna grab all of it, but then I'm like, I'll eat all of it, so I better not.
Yeah, that's Ryan.
All right, please, Chris.
So tonight, we are very, uh, very excited to present the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, uh, village budget. It's the tentative budget that was filed on March twentieth of this year, uh, in accordance with village law. So this is something that we've been working for the last five months, starting with, uh, direction from the village board, memo that goes out to department heads, the department heads work on it, comes back to the village, and, um, you know, we have a budget work team that consists of myself, our village treasurer, Trish Lapre, uh, Lauren Simmons, our deputy treasurer, and Greg Rivera, the assistant to the administrator, and we meet with all the department heads, go over the budget, and really work together. It's a great team that way, and we present, um, Trish and I worked together very closely to provide, uh, provide the tentative budget. And right up front, I'm gonna just say how amazing Trish is. As our village treasurer, we're lucky to have Trish Lapre as our treasurer. She makes my life so much easier, and she is on top of everything. So we are very lucky here in the village, and I know I'm lucky to have, have to work with Trish every day. So again, uh, we've had held two budget work sessions, I know the board knows that, but, uh, for the public, we've had two work sessions on April first and April eighth, and now the budget has to be adopted by May first, and if it's not adopted by May first, the tentative budget becomes the budget. So that's why you need to do it by then.
So we don't actually need to vote on any?
Yeah. True. So we always start with our goals, and and they really don't change too much every year. Basically, we wanna keep the taxes as low as possible. The, we want to maintain quality services. You know, we wanna keep investing in our infrastructure. That's so important here in the village. I'm really proud that the board has always supported that, and our departments really work hard to make sure our infrastructure is maintained. Really important in New York State, where we have a lot of aging infrastructure, and I think we've done a great job keeping up with that. And also, keeping a strong financial condition. We wanna make sure we stay on top of our finances, and, you know, sort of a village that the financially and other, and service-wise, that everybody could feel proud of. Uh, this is the second year we're doing a digital budget, so the whole budget is available, so it's prepared, everything is prepared online, from the department entries to the changes that we make, the present presentation of the tentative budget, the board's review at the work sessions, and ultimately, the final budget. And the, this virtual budget provides a lot more options. It's a lot, other than a typical flat PDF, which a lot of other municipalities do and continue to do, this is something that we're very proud. Residents can, residents could go in and see many years of experience. They can go back and see what the numbers are. They can run different graphs and charts they could do on their own, and it's very intuitive, it's very flexible on how people can read it. There's a lot of information there, and instead, the whole thing is done virtually and online, which I think has been a really great step. And also, on efficiency-wise, it's nice, because when the departments are entering it in, we're doing the changes and adopting what the board does, everything gets transferred to our financial system at the end, so it's really seamless from that, and prevents a lot of double and triple entry. Uh, just gonna start right up, right up front. Again, we, uh, we are tax cap compliant, so we are, this is the, uh, let's see, hold on a sec. So we are tax cap compliant, uh, we provide very high-quality services, we believe. Uh, these are qual services that are both, some of it's required and some are desired. Let's face it, some are optional services we're not required to provide, but it's what really makes the Rybrook difference. We continue, we look for ways to improve. Uh, we're under the tax cap again for twelve out of thirteen years that it's been existence, with the only year, the only outlier being that one year, when we first started with our highway garage and had some tax sorcery, um, paybacks. So other than that one time, one year, which was a planned expense, you know, we've been tack, been under the cap every time. You know, we have a very lean staff, seventy-six positions. We've eliminated one position from someone who retired, and we've added two positions. We've added a police officer and a labor position. Um, it is consistent with our financial policies as well. So this page really provides the overall, the overview. The village's overall assessed value, you can see, is three-point five billion dollars. The good news there is that's up about two-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars overall. That's a good sign. Our property values are going up, um, they, that's good for the residents, that's good for all the homeowners. Uh, commercial properties and residential properties have gone up. The residential assessed values have gone up about two-hundred-and-thirty-three million, and the commercial values have gone up about sixteen million. So they're more flat, but they're still going up, they're going in the right direction. So over here, you can see the tax levy, which is about to be raised by taxation. You can see, uh, you can see the portion that's paid by the homestead, and the portion that's paid by the non-homestead. Uh, overall, the tax levy is up three-point-eight-six percent, which you can see on the bottom, and you can see what the homestead levy is and the non-homestead portion. And the amount that it's below the cap were about eleven-thousand-one-twenty-seven. So we kind of lay out two examples here. On the left side, you see the homestead, which are the one and two family homes, and on the right are the other homes, as well as the commercial properties. And you can see the portion of the levy that belongs to the homestead portion. Again, basically, the residential portion. That's the tax rate. You can see the average property value at nine-ninety-five, overall for the village. That homeowner, at the average value, would pay five-thousand-and-thirty-five dollars in an average village tax, and that's about a hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars more over last year. On the non-homestead, we can't really pick an average, because there's all different types of commercial properties, so we just give you a sample property value of ten million dollars. That ten-million-dollar value, property of ten-million dollars, would pay eighty-three and change in village taxes, which is a decrease of about two-point, two-thousand-eight-hundred-eighty-three dollars, which is pretty level on that size property. Okay, this slide talks about the actual distribution, and this is, um, this really shows that homestead and non-homestead does help the property taxpayers. It helps the single one and two family homes in particular. Uh, the actual distributions, this shows year-over-year from two thousand fourteen to two thousand twenty-three, you can see what the base proportions are, the portion of the, the, think of it as a percentage of the pie that's going paid by the homo, homestead properties versus the non-homestead properties. So if you look at this year, and you look at the upper line, you can see the seventy-eight, seventy-nine, basically seventy-nine percent on the homestead, and uh, twenty-one percent on the non-homestead is, of the budget is paid by them. If you didn't have homestead, that would be eighty-six and fourteen. So again, I'm gonna say that again, so instead of seventy-eight percent, or seventy-nine percent, the homo, homestead portion, if you didn't have the homestead base proportions law, they'd be paying eighty-six percent. That's a lot more money. On the resident, on the commercial properties, instead of paying, uh, twenty-one percent, they'd only be paying fourteen percent. So the homestead properties, for good or for bad, does protect the one and two family homeowners. Okay, tax rates in the past decade. Um, what you're looking for is, you see the green line and the blue line? You want them to start merging toward, towards together, to be closer together. And red is the overall tax rate for the village. So you really, the best thing scenario would be if the green and the blue start getting closer and closer together, but you see that doesn't always happen over time, because properties will go up, some will escalate farther, commercial properties will go out of business, or, you know, and that's what we've had here, a little bit of fluctuation. Okay, so this, this slide is very simply, well, how do I know how much my tax, my taxes went up? You know, everyone is, everyone at full value, how do I figure that out? The only way to figure it out is to pull out your tax bills and look at what your assessed value is from last year, and what your assessed value is this year, because it's gonna depend on if your property went up to a greater or lesser extent than your neighboring properties or other community properties in the village. The formula is simple, but you gotta pull it out, which is simply take your assessed value last year, and that was the average assessed value in twen, last, last fiscal year, the tax rate last year, you multiply towards it, and that was the village tax, four-thousand-eight-hundred-sixty-eight. This year, you could see the values went up, the average property value went up, so that same property would be, and that's the tax rate that's applied for homestead, and you can see the average residential property owner would be paying five-thousand-thirty-five dollars. So it's another, that's the one-sixty-seven we mentioned earlier. This talks a little bit more about the distribution of property taxes, where the taxes go. So again, the average overall property in Rybrook is nine-hundred-ninety-five-thousand, and that's up about sixty-three-thousand over last year. That's a healthy increase in assessed values. Uh, here, if you're in the Blindbrook School District, which is to the left, that average AV goes up to one-million-seventy-two-thousand-eight-ninety-six, okay? The total taxes for that average property in the Blindbrook School District is twenty-nine-thousand-four-fifty-five, of which the village tax is five-thousand-four-twenty-nine, or about nineteen percent. In the Portchester School District, things are a little bit different, and you will see there, the average AV is six-hundred-sixty-seven-thousand-six-forty-one, total taxes is fourteen-thousand-five-twenty-seven, and the village tax is three-thousand-three-seventy-eight, which is about twenty-four percent of the overall pie. So again, the village, overall, depending on where you are, is somewhere between nineteen and twenty-four cents on, on the dollar. Okay, where's our money go? Expenditures. So all of this adds up to the twenty-five-point-seven-million-dollar budget that we have in expenditures, not including capital. Personnel and benefits are the largest portion. That's basically fourteen, fifteen, sixteen-point-eight million of the, of the piece of the pie. The equipment and contractual, debt service, we don't have a lot of debt. It's only about one-point-six billion right now. We only have one band and two serial bonds left at this point in time. So that's very, you know, we're very healthy, we don't have heavy debt load, and special accounts is four-hundred-and-forty-five. So you can see where the majority of the money's going. It's personnel and benefits. We're people providing services. That's what we're about. Okay, this just lists out some of the drivers that we have in this year, what's driving our budget, what's driving our cost. So inflation rates are up, you know, CPI is up, you know, if you look February to February of la, of last year, this year, you look, talk about over three percent. Interest rates are up in March seventeenth, St. Patty's Day. The average, the thirty-year fixed, fi, fixed refinance APR was about seven-point-two-nine. You know, so they're higher, so you're gonna see things go up. We have a small staff, we have some changes there, but we did add one additional position with the laborer and the police officer, a net of one with the retirement, that we didn't fill the other position in recreation. Health insurance premiums are up between six and seven and a half percent this year, and are projected to go up about eight percent next year. The health, the employee retirement system is probably our biggest, biggest, uh, portion of the benefits. For the employee system, uh, it's almost eighteen percent, seventeen-point-eight, so that's eighteen percent. That means eighteen cents on the dollar for every dollar paid goes to the retirement system on top of that. And the policeman fire is almost thirty-five percent. So that means thirty, almost thirty-five cents on the dollar for every income that's paid out. That's required by New York State for any of the public employees in those systems. Development impacts are a big driver as well. You know, the, what happens with nine-hundred King Street and Dorell, Dorell Arrowood and the Hilton, these are things we're hoping to see big change on in the next coming years, and, uh, we think that there's some real positive signs there. On the revenue side, some things are impacting us, is our mortgage taxes are down. Again, people aren't refinancing, because the rates are higher. Sales taxes kind of leveling out. We got that additional one percent from the county, which helped us, but we're seeing that things are starting to level out in terms of what we're receiving. Building revenues are flat, but we're hoping that will increase as the big developments come on board in the next, over the next several years. And the interest rates on the positive side, the interest, with the interest rates up, you know, we're getting a lot more in terms of interest for, in our accounts as well. So that's a positive. Our interest earnings have gone way up. I know everyone's seen this slide before, but I just find it fascinating. You know, you look at the history, this is, I think, forty-two years of time. You can see, so remember, retirement system is a payment of, based on a percentage of what they earn. So if, for every dollar, it's gonna be some percentage, uh, that you're gonna pay towards retirement. So you can see how things happen in cycles. In the early eighties, you see the percentages were high. You know, you're looking there at fifteen and thirty, almost thirty percent, but the numbers were much different. You know, then you saw the low points in the early two thousands, when it was only, you know, eleven, twelve-thousand dollars we were paying in retirement. Now we're paying two-point-two million, and those rates are really at highest point ever. Okay, then now is, that line at the bottom, that's the minimum threshold. So the board, sorry, the state put that minimum threshold, so you're never gonna see it below, go below the line anymore. That four and a half percent is always a minimum threshold. Again, the revenue side, this just kind of picks out some certain revenues and tells you how it's trending. Um, most of the fluctuations happened as a result of, you know, COVID and development trends that we've had. Uh, the additional one percent sales tax helped, but you could see the sales, that's why you see the sales tax kind of fluctuating more than the other ones. And that's a big number for us. Building inspection fees al, also goes with the wave of inspections. You could see that's kind of leveled out. And again, when nine-hundred and Anderson Hill Road come on board and start to actually build, you're gonna see those numbers climb again, but right now, they're kind of stagnant.
It's too bad that doesn't go back one or two more years.
Yeah.
Where the hotel tax would've been up.
We used to have that line on there.
I know. Well, it's on, it's on there, it's just at zero.
Is that, it's still there?
Oh, yeah, it was still there. It's, it's at the very bottom.
It's just at zero, yeah. Yeah, that line used to be a much, that was a much happier number.
Yeah, it was a much happier number.
Maybe someday again, right?
We can hope.
So again, returning to our initial goals, goal first close, keep taxes as low as possible. We think we've done that. These two numbers just show the actual levy that was adopted and the allowable levy, and you see there's not really a difference in those lines. You know, we've always been able to stay within the allowable levy, within the tax cap. So, you know, we think we work really hard at that. If you went back to, again, two thousand nineteen, that one year that we, the one time we exceeded was a planned exceedance, and that was for a particular reason. So again, keep taxes low, quality service. Maintain quality services. So this is our village offices account, so we have some of the things we're just doing. We'd like to highlight, there's some of the stuff going on. Our new online application system's about to, to come on, you know, come aboard. Uh, that's gonna be for the building department. We're doing, uh, inspections in the field, and people will be, get emailed copies of their inspection reports, so they're getting. So they're getting, it's a lot more than, not having to come back to the office makes it more efficient. Um, companies will be able to do the applications online, pay fees online, and that's a nice step. We've had two new, three new employees in the past year in our village offices, so we have a new George in treasury, Jessica Carpi and Thierry in, in Public Works, and Freddie DeVito in our building department, after some other retirements. And we had the one promotion with Jennifer Lechter in the treasurer's office, so you know, congratulations to all of them. We continue with all our financial transparency actions, and you know, we think we're very transparent in the village, and people can find as much information as they'd like to follow. And obviously, the NRCS administration is a, still a very big project and takes a lot of time on our offices. Okay, in our quality, maintaining quality services here, you see our police, you know, we have our new school resource officer, is a great new initiative. That we're able to, the, the chief was able to work with our department, work with the school district, and come up with our new school resource officer, which will rotate between the Portchester High School and Middle School. We have the additional police officer, we need to um, have a new officer. After somebody gets assigned there, we're gonna have a vacancy there, so we need to make sure that that per, that position gets filled. And we have um, we have an additional officer in the budget. And uh, we have some vacancies we need to fill now, and uh, police contract is also out, so we need to make sure, you know, there's funds available for whatever comes through that arbitration. Um, this year, we've welcomed a new police officer, which is An- Angelie Alexander. And we've had some promotions with Dan Bruno, uh, getting promoted to sergeant, and also Titus Alexander recently uh, assigned to the detective bureau. So we got a lot, a lot of great things happening there, and a lot of new initiatives. Fire department, uh, we've changed a little, we've had a great training program, but we've had to do some adjustments there, where we had to go from a contractual arrangement to a part-time fire instructor, that's more on our payroll. Um, that's, we're in the process of making that, making sure that happens, so the same person and the same type of program can be offered. Um, we're doing a lot of community outreach, they're very active in the community. Uh, they work closely with the Portchester Fire Department. Uh, we're doing a lot more calls into the Portchester and the city of Rye, and vice versa, which is very nice to see the three communities working closely. And we're working to replace the fire engine as well. That engine is a two thousand, engine fourteen, which is a two thousand Spartan Salisbury truck. Public Works and Parks, uh, we welcome the new groundskeeper, Ralph, Ralph DeRosa. Uh, road resurfacing, sewer maintenance are some of the biggest parts of that, of the budget, uh, in terms of capital costs. They really are an extension of our emergency services, you know, they really work very closely with all of our emergency service. There really is an extension of them as well. People don't always think of that, and they really should, that's such an important piece. And we have an additional labor position, which was cut out of the budget last year, unfortunately. So we, we've reinstalled that position, which is sorely needed. They do a lot of work maintaining our parks, maintaining our, our, our streets, and that, that position is, without that position, we weren't able to keep, you know, up to the level that we like to be, and we like to see that, we want that reinstalled if the board would do that. EMS, uh, we've become, you know, we're working really hard to bring this, to be this the place where the employees go and they feel really that they're a part of this EMS, they're very proud to be there, and I think you really hear that from the people that are working there. So as you know, the village, working with Portchester and the city of Rye, implemented this multi-year plan for recruitment, retention, uh, salary steps to increase over a five-year period, and that's working really well, and they're doing a lot more in terms of retention now. Um, we're gonna be considering the district, which was a recommendation of the study that we did a few, two years ago. And uh, we continue to support them as an essential service. There's only forty-two more slides to go.
But who's counting?
But who's counting? Um, Parks and Recreation, you know, we, we, I think they do a great job, there's a lot of, we really focus on community events and quality programs. We do a lot of programs people don't know about or see, or other communities don't offer, things like the child, the school age childcare program. You know, I think we're only one of two communities in the, in the county that run this state license program for after-school. Uh, we, our day camp numbers are really high right now, are really going up. Last year, and hopefully they'll continue this year. We do a lot of community events, you know, from big events to what we call kind of uh, quick hits, you know, hour, hour and a half type events, and we're finding that really seems to work well. Uh, with Trustee Epstein's help, we're doing a lot more in terms of like fitness initiatives and music in the park, and we do a lot of other programs, and she works closely with the staff and, and our, our departments to really make sure they go off well. And this year, we're really doing a big push to expand our pickleball program. We also have a, the new app system, where people will be registering for tennis and pickleball, hopefully be an easier way to get on, and we'll have more courts available. Also a commitment in Rybrook with the board's directive about sustainability. So this is a really big push, this is something that's really important to us. And uh, you know, everything from doing new electrical vehicle chargers to food scrap programs, and the seed exchange, and the cleanups, and this year with the board doing the seasonal leaf blower ban, these are all really important sustainability projects for the long term. As you know, we've got, we think we have one of the best senior programs around. You know, we're small but mighty, we always keep saying that in Rybrook, but they really do a great job. The seniors love going there, we have people coming from all different communities to join the programs, and you see the smiles there, and that, that's what you see every day when you go down. It's really a great place to go. The Liz Roethfeld is a senior coordinator, does a great job meeting the needs of the seniors, doing all different types of programs from, you know, from exercise programs to educational programs, you know, food service, everything under the sun that we can do to try to meet those needs, and I think they do a great job. Third goal was reinvesting in capital, and you can see how we've continued to do that over the years. Real quick here, you can see, the red is our payments for bands and bonds, and you can see that's, you know, we don't, we don't have a lot, high payments for them, or high outstanding. Uh, we have the, uh, all the capital costs, you see in the, in the, uh, in the green, total, not including the bond financing, and uh, the road resurfacing is steady, we make sure that that's at a level. There's a math behind that, that says this is what we need to do to keep reinvesting in our streets, and increasing the overall score, scores of our road system, and I think we've done that over the years. And overall, the tentative budget had one point three million dollars in capital, and that's only gone up since the budget work sessions. This is the capital projects, a little hard to read, so I apologize, but there's a heavy capital load there. So you can see the road resurfacing, the sewer repairs are, are a big part of what we do, we try to do that annually. Uh, those two numbers, that's your basic infrastructure, that's where we need to keep maintaining, that's where the money, most of the money needs to go. Well, from police vehicles to HVAC equipment, where we had some grants, scanning of records to keep more, be more efficient, our basic IT infrastructure, uh, you see a lot of, some IT, you see pump store system upgrades. These are all basic parts of what we want to do to upgrade and make sure everything's reinvested. Uh, converting the Geyer-Bolte tennis to pickleball courts on a permanent basis, that's what people seem to want right now, so we want to be able to provide that. Village Hallwork, this TAF vehicle, we're gonna go electric. And um, different, the radar units, which is going to have one on Rid Street, a permanent one on Rid Street near Crawford Park, and then there'll be another one, there'll be a mobile one, we can use on places like Lincoln Avenue. Um, in the bottom on the red, are other projects that we talked about and are gonna add, hopefully in the adopted budget, which we talked about with the board in the work sessions, that's the fire engine, which is, just need to authorize the funding for the ban, even though it won't be paid for another, probably two years. The police fire training room, we're gonna, the board, we're gonna, board wants to put another, start the project to get that training room in place with heating and air conditioning. Tennis courts at Harkness Park, which definitely are needed. And our sewer, we talked about our server and infrastructure for the basic, our overall IT system. Overall, that's, you can see, it's about one point three million. Of that, we're funding that through our capital fund, designated for capital fund balance. We have grants, we have chips money, which is for highway improvement projects, that also comes from outside sources. Okay, and the last goal was maintaining, make sure our finances are strong. Recently, we saw our fiscal, New York State Controller's Office Fiscal Stress Mining System that's out there. Our score is zero. Concerns start at forty-five, we're now at zero, so it's as low as you can go, you can't go negative. Uh, the bond rating, we're, we're at double A one, which again, is only one more place to go, which is triple A, which would be really difficult for a community of our size. But that's the second highest you can go on the Moody's Rating System.
Uh-huh.
Yeah. We have a very good fund balance, we have a strong fund balance, which is about twenty-two percent of our overall budget. And again, anything over our financial policies, we consider use of that for capital projects, non-operating expenses. We have low debt, we mentioned we have one serial, one, now I get confused. One band and two serial bonds left. Uh, we could actually, if we wanted to, our constitutional debt limit is two hundred and twenty-two million, if you, if, if you wanted to go that high, but our debt is fourteen million, so we are way below. The, uh, and property values are strong, you could see, the bottom line is how is it happening, you know, what's the impact in the community? Our property values are up, you know, two hundred and fifty million overall, those, those are all good signs, both in the residential and the non-residential side. So, just wanted to highlight some, you know, how do we look for alternative revenue sources? What are some of those sources? So we added this kind of, this slide in this year, our after-school program, you know, that brings in about a hundred and ninety thousand this year. Other rec programs brings in four hundred and thirty thousand. Cell tower leases over, over a hundred and fifty thousand now annually. Our compo site lease, where we have an operator that gets rid of our lease for free, uh, but pays us a fee at sixty-two thousand five hundred. We have things like our airport garage revenue is forty thousand. And you can see the listing, we have well over a million dollars in grants, uh, that we were able to obtain as well. So we have different grants from all different sources on all important projects that we, that we're looking to get done.
And an old car that we sold.
And an old car, and got part of the money back. This just shows you a little snapshot of our overall debt management. And you can see, you know, we're very low and where we are. And there you can see our serial bonds, outstanding serial bonds and our bands, and you can see we're very, very low debt. Um, their debt is basically the, the Public Works Garage, uh, and a couple of bands to, for the fire truck that we had purchased, uh, for a couple of the small projects, but really, this is, uh, this is very low debt that you have right now. Uh, but we strategically use our capital and our debt fund, and our foot debt, and our debt fund balance for the reserves to apply to the capital. It's all, you know, planned, how we're gonna use the debt, how much, when we're gonna go into debt, balancing off our fund balance, look at our designated for capital projects account, and try to keep, balance that off so that the taxpayers are not having to pay or get really hit too hard in any particular year. As we mentioned, we've had two budget work sessions, and this is a summary of what occurred at those work sessions. So you can see some additional money was provided to the library, and also to Human Services, which is our senior center. And that was to add the chair yoga session, and we offset those expenses with our police and fire retirement system payment. So we think that that, you know, that's a safe way to do that, and the net impact is still the same eleven thousand one twenty-seven below the tax cap, so there's no change in the tax levy increase from the tentative budget. Other capital projects we talked about that were added, and various fee amendments, particularly with the residential CFO, which hadn't been changed in many, many years, and the extended mistype, uh, with a typo on the spelling by me, and tennis court rentals going from A fifty to nine hundred a week. And you can see there's no impact overall on the tax levy. So the board made certain, many changes, but the changes didn't increase the levy or decrease the levy, it kept maintaining it the same as the tentative budget. So, once again, thank you to the village board, thank you to the department heads, especially thank you to Trish, and Greg, and Lawrence, and everyone, it's really a team effort on all, for everyone that's involved, and I think, you know, we're very proud of this tentative budget, and now it's up to the board to consider adoption at your next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Without you, yeah.
Yeah, and, and I think, um, you know, for those who haven't ever been involved in this process, you know, to, to say that, that Chris, Trish, Lawrence, that, that everyone does a great job would be an understatement. Um, you know, this is, this is not an easy process, uh, trying to manage the needs of the village with the, um, with the finances, and, and trying to find that right balance of, how do we provide the right amount of services? You know, and, and like Chris said in the beginning, you know, that, that the residents of Rybrook have come to expect a certain level of service. Um, they expect us, you know, anything from having, you know, there's some municipalities that won't have, you know, multiple trash pickups a week, even something as simple as that. Or the ability to have that done in, in their, you know, in their rear yard or garage. Um, you know, the, the services that come from the road resurfacing and, and keeping, you know, the, the leaves clear in the fall, uh, keeping the roads clean in the winter. Um, you know, the, the storm sewer upgrades, the police department, and how professional they are, the fire department, and the service we provide with a fully-staffed, non-volunteer, paid fire department. Um, these are things that, that the residents of Rybrook have come to expect, and, and keeping those levels of service in this ever-changing financial climate is not easy. And the work that goes into it is, is just very commendable. It's just, um, it makes, I would say, it makes our lives as trustees, uh, both very easy and very hard. Very easy in the fact that, you know, it's, it's an amazing budget, and there's, there's, you know, you can see that there's minor changes that we make, we try and add as much as we can into the budget to help the departments out, and to make sure that the staff has what they need to do the jobs that they're tasked with doing. Uh, but it also makes it, it hard if we want to institute change, because it's so tight. Everything's so good, and you saw this, this stress factor there of zero. And our audits come back clean year after year. And that's because of the work that goes into this budget, because of what Trish and Lawrence do on a daily basis, every day, not just at budget season. So, you know, we thank you so much for everything that you do for the village of Rybrook. It's, you know, most people won't see this, most people won't see what, what's happening, you know. They see the police officers on the street, they see the fire department, they see the, the workers out on the street, the DPW guys, they don't see what's, what's happening in here. They have interaction with the, with the building department. Um, but they don't see what's happening in finance, but this really means a tremendous amount to the, to the residents of Rybrook. And so thank you so much for, for everything you do. And again, also thank you to the department heads, we know it's not always easy, you know, we, you know, and, and if we had unlimited, if we, if we went into two hundred and twenty-two million dollars of debt, then maybe we could provide everything that every department head wanted, but, um, you know, for, for a sound, uh, you know, financial stability, then no, we're not gonna do that. Um, but it's, this is, you know, and it's, it's always a process, but um, something that, you know, I, I look forward to every year, and, and just, it's, it's amazing what you do with this, with this budget, so thank you so much.
I, I can't say that I look forward to it every year. It's sort of like looking forward to Route Canal, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, that's right.
But I must say that, let me start with the people in this room, Chris and Trish, Lawrence, Greg, Michael, Greg. You guys do a great job, you make our lives so much easier, but I think we owe a debt to virtually every employee who works for the village. They collectively make this village an absolutely superb place to live in. And I wish I could say, well, it's just the department heads, but it's not just the department heads. It's everybody who's below the department heads who put in the labor too. And so I say thank you to all seventy-six of our village employees.
Absolutely, and for those that don't know, I mean, this is, this is the type of um, government where people come up with ideas. They regularly come up with ideas on any level, um, and, and it gets seen through to implementation. And that's where we get a lot of the great ideas for, for what, what gets done in the village. And so this, absolutely. Ditto.
Well said, I can't say it any better.
Yeah, exactly, thank you.
And on the staff, we feel the same way, you know, the support that the board provides to all of us, so that we can do our jobs, provide recommendations. to all of us so that we can do our jobs, provide recommendations to, and you're the ones that get the grief on the streets. You know, you're the ones that hear the good, the bad, and the ugly, any of the above. So really, the support that you provide to us, you know, to provide recommendations, to to try different things is really appreciated, you know. You set the tone from the top and, you know, you do a great job and we're very, very lucky to have all of you as a village board.
And David and Susan are stuck for another three years now that they just got re-elected.
That's a tough one.
This is my twelfth budget.
Twelfth budget, yeah. I was gonna say, I'm one, I'm one shy of you, I think. I came on the board a year after you, I think, so.
Make the question.
But you are the longest tenured tenured board member here.
And the oldest by far.
So this is a public hearing. Are there any comments from the public? All right, are we, we, all right. So can I have a motion second, please, to the public hearing?
So moved.
All right.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein? Yes. Thank you, and thank you again for all of the hard work goes into this. We look forward to passing the budget and making it from proposed or tentative, sorry, tentative to adopted.
Adopted, yep.
So we look forward to adopting the budget at the next meeting prior to the May first deadline so we can start our fiscal year on time. All right, moving on to the next resolution, resolution number three, considering.
Just to mention, so there is a second public hearing.
Oh, right, sorry.
Which if the board is comfortable where you are now in adopting the budget where it is now, then you don't need to open the public hearing.
How could I forget? I cannot, and of all people, for me to have forgotten this. So the second, the second public hearing would have been a public hearing on a proposed local law authorizing a property tax levy in excess of the tax cap. And I would just say that this is an unfunded mandate from New York State. New York State is a home rule state in which the local municipalities have the right to set their own legislation. And this was a, just a random number almost, it seems, conceived by the state of New York that was supposed to come with relief to the municipalities in the form of mandate relief.
Still waiting.
But also in the form of checks to residents, so incentives to residents that you would only get if you stayed within the tax cap, well, only if you stayed below the tax cap, if your municipality stayed below the tax cap. We did, our residents did receive the checks for a number of years. Those have gone away. We have not seen any mandate relief. And so I strongly believe personally that if we needed to override it, we would. Now, in that spirit, we have chosen year after year to stay within the tax cap because it is in the, it is to the benefit of our residents and we're proud to have done so. And as Chris showed in the slides earlier, I think it was the average home bear at a value of nine hundred and ninety-five thousand on a home sees a tax increase of approximately a hundred and sixty-seven dollars, which is very reasonable in this day and age and allows us to add those extra positions and provide the services that our residents have come to expect while also being financially prudent for their benefit. So we do not see any reason to hold this public hearing because we are staying eleven, a little over eleven thousand dollars under the tax cap. Any questions on that, comments?
No.
Now, David, you were looking forward to that.
Well, I just look forward to your annual speech about home rule.
Well, there, you got it. I think it's actually been twice this year. So, all right, so we will, we will not open that public hearing because we do not see us breaking the tax cap. So we do not need that legislation.
Correct.
This year. All right, moving on, resolution number three, considering annual organizational meeting resolutions.
And I'll just mention for the public, the next two resolutions are resolutions that you consider, village is considered the first meeting every April to reestablish your rules of procedures, your contracts with consultants, committee and board appointments. So this is called our annual reorganizational meeting, and this is, again, under village law, that occurs at your first meeting in April typically. So retaining, I'm just gonna kind of summarize because they're long resolutions. So retaining village attorney is Keenan Bean, Ralph DiMarco of White Plains, New York, and there's a new retainer agreement dated March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. Appointment of Labor Council, that's Little or Mendelson, Craig Benson. Tax Resiari Council, Tulis Wilks Huff and Geiger, Mark Tulis. Special Water Council, Joel Dichter. Appointment of Village Risk Manager is FOA and Sons. Engineering Consultant is Dolph Rotfeldt Engineering, Division of AI Engineers. And I'll just correct that, it'll be Anthony Oliveri in the name. And retaining a planning consultant is Hardesty and Hanover, and I'll correct the name there too, but it's Hardesty and Hanover. And appointment, and that's rates effective June first, two thousand twenty-four. Appointment of Special Engineering Consultant is Henningson Durham and Richardson Architecture and Engineering, Mike Musso. Bond Counsel is Phil Brighton Jaworski, Randy Meyer. Auditing Firm is O'Connor Davies Muntz and Dobbin's. IT Consultant is Dragon Tech. Police Department IT Consultant is AI Computers. Village Administrator and Village Clerk is Chris Bradbury. Claims Auditor is Judith Belkin. Village Treasurer is Patricia Lapree. Deputy Village Treasurer is Lauren Simmons. Receiver of Taxes is Nick Mecca. Register of Vital Statistics is Hope Vespia. Records Management Officer is Chris Bradbury. Board of Trustees Night is the second and fourth Tuesdays of every month at seven thirty. Signatories is the Mayor Administrator Treasurer, Deputy Treasurer, and there's a listing of the banks and who can sign different documents. The designation of depositories and there's a listing of the various banks where we can make deposits. Official Newspaper is Westmore News. Friends of Rybrook, the board also designates themselves as the Friends of Rybrook Board for nonprofit corporation to assist in donations receipts from granters and supporting activities of the village. Readoption of the rules of procedure of the Board of Trustees, those are available online too as well, and I think that's the last resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please?
So moved.
We appreciate you going through that quickly. That was about the fastest I've seen it. And I guess since some of the people in the room, Ralph.
Thank you.
We're very happy to have you continue and we are always proud to have the Westmore News as our official newspaper.
Thank you.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number four, considering appointments to various boards, committees, and commissions.
Okay, I'm gonna go through the boards, list the names and the chairs. So Sustainability Committee is Corey Stevenson, Debbie Freeman, Alicia Castellano, and Bridget Dix is reappointed as chair. Parks and Recreation, Judith Klein, Christie, Christie Muddas, Taylor Gutierrez, and Judy Klein is reappointed as chair. Airport Advisory Council is Paul Noto, Peter Schlaktis, and Peter Schlaktis is reappointed as chair. Architecture Review Board is Mitchell Levy is reappointed as chair. Ethics Board is Larry Engel, Dana Zimmerman, Ken Finder, Andrew Zeitlin, and Bonnie Baker, and Andrew Zeitlin is reappointed as chair. Planning Board is Amy Shone and Robert Goodman is reappointed as chair. Records Management Committee is Jason Klein as mayor, Chris Bradbury, Trish Lapree, Liz Rotfeld, and Greg Austin. Technology and Communications Commission, Paul Fagan and Craig and Craig Rigano are appointed as co-chair persons. Traffic Commission, Stephen Klein, Jonathan Newmark, and Michael Barnett is appointed as chair. Judiciary Board of Appeals is Glenn Brett Schneider, Joel Simon, Jamie Schuster, Steve Berger, and Don Moscato is reappointed as chair.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any questions or comments?
Thank you to all these volunteers.
That's what I was gonna say. Thank you to everyone who has been volunteering and continues to volunteer. For those who are new to the commissions or committees, we thank you also for for volunteering your time. And for those who are the chairs, we especially thank you for taking on that extra.
Bird.
I didn't want to say that word.
Service.
Service, thank you. That's what I was gonna say, but I don't want to.
It's service, AKA bird.
Thank you for taking on the extra service and and being and being the chairs of those committees. All right.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number, oh, are we five? Resolution number five, considering the appointment of a police officer.
Resolved that Trevor Burns of New City, New York, is hereby conditionally appointed to the position of police officer with the village of Rybrook, subject to the civil service procedures of the state of New York and according to the letter, offer letter dated April first, two thousand twenty-four. Be further resolved that the annual salary is sixty thousand nine eighty-three with an effective estimated start date of May first, two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second?
So moved.
Second.
We look forward to welcoming Officer Burns to the to the force and to Rybrook. And we also look forward to, I'm assuming that he'll be here at a future meeting at some point, and we very much looking for, look forward to that.
When is his start date?
May first.
Wonderful.
If all things go smooth, so we just need to, you know, there's a process with civil service we have to go through, but when it's when it's all completed, well, we're happy to invite him over, right, chief? And what a terrible day to send an offer letter, by the way. On April Fool's Day, we send an offer letter, right?
Do we have, um, did we have a motion second?
Yes.
Okay.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number, I'm losing count of my, number six, thank you. Considering awarding contract twenty-four oh three, janitorial services.
Whereas the village of Rybrook solicited bids for contract twenty-one dash oh one, janitorial services, and whereas the public notice was advertised in the official newspaper, and actually that contract is twenty-four dash oh three.
I was gonna say, that's.
It's a copy from the last time. So and whereas a public notice was advertised in the official newspaper on Friday, March twenty-second, and the bid was opened at ten AM on April fifth, and the bidders came in was NSI Clean World, Superior Building Maintenance, CTE Inc., Clean Tech, and Quality Floor Shine Corp. And there's, it was a, it's a five-year bid with two alternates, one alt, and oh, sorry, another one, Cleaning Services of Hudson Valley as well. Now therefore be resolved that after, following the review of the bids by the administrator and superintendent of Public Works, they determine the lowest responsible bidder, meaning the requirements is NSI Clean World Inc. for the base bid amount of twenty-nine thousand dollars for a total of one hundred and forty-five thousand over the years, the five years. And whereas if we are further resolved, the alternates one and two are approved, be further resolved, the mayor and administrator authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Does this represent a change?
This is our, no, it's our current, it's our current cleaning company who we're happy with. And the alternates are, we got alternate prices for, oh, gosh, what is the special cleaning? Floor, some special services like floor cleaning, if we wanted to pick it, we can. Yeah, I know, we walked out.
Great.
So there's like carpet cleaning and extra services, we just wanted to be able to have that. We can still do it separately, but if we want to do it, we have a price for it.
Okay, great.
I must say, this was a pleasure that most of the bids were within a fairly narrow band.
Yeah.
One person bids a hundred thousand, another person bids six million.
That's true. It's true.
Yeah, that is correct. All right, great.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number seven, considering a modification of the employee-provided vehicle use policy.
Whereas the village of Rybrook seeks to modify the employee-provided vehicle use policy, and we seek to add the commuter rule provision to the employer, employee-provided vehicle use policy, allowing for authorized village personnel to choose to utilize employee-provided vehicles for commuting or de minimis personal use. And whereas the Board of Trustees must approve revising the employee-provided vehicle use policy for allowing commuting or de minimis personal use. And whereas therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the modification, allowing for village personnel to choose to utilize employee-providing vehicles for commuting or de minimis personal use using the commuter rule. And be further resolved that the title of the Assistant General Foreman also be added to the policy as a position authorized to utilize a vehicle for village-related business use and limited personal use.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Let me give a little background.
Do you want a little background, please?
Sure. So the board had previously authorized the Assistant General Foreman, just didn't, we didn't put in the policy, so I just wanted to update that that last one. But the other one is, so the village automobile policy allows for business use and limited personal use. So what we have to do, and we're one of the very few communities that actually do what we're supposed to do, but we actually track the mileage on an actual basis for a period of time for the personal use versus business use, using, what we use is a trip log logger, and there's an online account that it goes to, and we track it for a period of time to get a baseline that, so we can then tax, because all of it gets taxed, any personal use will get taxed. And even commute going, commuting from home to work is considered a personal use. So if you go to there, if you go use it in the weekend, you go to a store, that's also considered personal use. So you get a baseline and that's what gets taxed. The other option for people to set to use is there's something called, and that's allowed, that's what we follow. We have some employee, one or two employees that want to use the commuter rule. The commuter rule is, says you cannot use it for any personal use except to commute from work to home. So that's, that's the only thing they could use it for. So that is a lesser tax if that, so we have some employees that say, we take it home, we park the car, we don't touch it until the Monday, and we come to work, we come and we use it at work, you know, unless there's a special call out for work, which is why they have the car. So this allows, what this does is allows those employees to use the commuter rule for the few people that don't want to use the tracking rule.
Right. Okay, thank you, Chris.
Long explanation, and and again, can I tell you how few actually do this and outside of here?
Yeah, no.
Most of my, most colleagues think I'm, we're really over the top, but it's the right thing to do.
Yeah, and and I've seen it in use where, you know, it's, and it and it does get taxed, get taxed as income. So it's basically considered income, so instead of using your personal vehicle to commute, it's, it's saying, well, that's a savings, so, and and so, yeah.
So if you went into my car, you'd go to my USB and you'd see a trip logger logging it, and it gets sent to a computer program where we track business and personal.
Oh.
We always know where Chris is.
That's it. You can see, I'm really boring, you can look at it as much as you want.
All right, do we have a motion second?
Motion.
We already did? Okay. All right. Any questions, any questions, comments? Okay.
How many vehicles do we have that people take?
Eight.
Yeah, it's here, it's, I think it's attached.
Yeah, I think I counted eight or something.
Village Administrator, the Chief of Police and the Police Lieutenant, who don't have to follow these rules because they have a separate set of rules. Village Engineer, Michael, is Building Inspector, Superintendent Recreation, General Foreman, Assistant Building Inspector, and the Assistant General Foreman.
And the idea being that these, these are.
They're on call.
People who are constantly on call. They need to, at any moment's notice, have to come into the village to perform work.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number eight, considering authorizing the issuance of nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar bonds of the village of Rybrook, Westchester County, New York, to pay the cost of the purchase of a fire engine.
Okay, so this one is definitely one you do not want me to read everything for.
No, please.
So let me tell you what it is. The short version is, as you know, we are designing the replacement for our two thousand Spartan Salisbury fire engine. And as part of that, now, the next step, there's a period of time to do, prepare bonds. So we are, as we finalize the spec and go out to bid, we, before the board can accept a bid, you have to have the funding approved, funding approved, which is this resolution. So you need to say, okay, the board's okay with allocating nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this fire engine, we're up to that amount. Then we go out to bid, we won't take this bond out, then it's gonna take two years to design it. You're not gonna pay this for another couple of years.
Right.
And you won't even take the bond out for another couple of years. But you can't accept the bid until you put the funding in place. And you always want it to be a comfortable, a comfortably high number so you don't have to redo it because there's a lot of noticing we have to do in papers and so forth. It takes, there's several, couple of months, like a month and a half or two. We have to put notices out, we have to put in the papers that people can challenge the bond request. So this is a timeframe that we have to get ahead of in order to go out to bid, so then the board could accept a bid at the end of the day.
I have, this is once again a question born out of ignorance. I gather that fire trucks are not uniform in their design and that's why it takes so long to design them?
They do take, uh, yeah, and it's also how many other trucks, like after COVID, you couldn't get a truck, you know, that kind of stuff, so.
I understand that delay because.
There's a delay, but they.
Just the, the design.
That's a complicated question. So a lot of companies, a lot of departments will, and municipalities will design it from the ground up. So they'll, literally everything will be specked out and you're, they're not custom, you're not buying them awful lot, you know? That said, we've had very good luck buying demos. That we've purchased demos in the past, we, our last two of our trucks were demos, so they were already built. We had a spec, so we just had to modify the demo to get close to the spec. So that was something, that cuts your time way down. In this case, what we're looking to do, and we're about to finalize, uh, we're looking to reuse the, uh, the back portion of the truck, which is stainless steel. The back of the engines are intended to um be used over and over. Most places don't do that, there's no reason not to do it. So you're gonna get a new truck, you're gonna get this one stripped down and you're gonna save yourself, we'll save the village about a couple hundred thousand dollars by doing that and it'll be delivered as a brand-new truck. But you're reusing part of the.
Or the oil truck.
Correct.
Oh geez.
Yeah.
I tried that with my new car.
So yeah, that's a, that's a long story of, that's a, that's the shortest story I can come up with.
All right, okay.
And that's all it comes to, that's why we have a design consultant that learn, that makes these recommendations to save us money and our fire department is a hundred percent on board.
Yeah.
Yeah, we really appreciate all the hard work that goes into this. We know that this is a necessity and something that needs to happen and uh we look forward to seeing it when it, when eventually we get it. Unlike uh my predecessor, I will not ask to drive it.
Which he didn't.
I know, well, I know, he doesn't have a CDL. So he wouldn't, but, all right. Do we have a motion second?
Motion.
Second.
We do now.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser? Trustee Marino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number nine, considering approving, approval of the minutes for the meeting held on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Now therefore be resolved that the board of trustees approves the minutes for the meeting held on November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. We have an add-on resolution, considering waiving restricted hours for NYU student filming.
Whereas the village code outlines permissible hours of filming saying that it can only take place from seven AM to eleven PM, Monday through Friday, and between the hours of nine AM and eleven PM on Saturday. And whereas an application by Galermo Prado the fourth, a student of New York University for exterior filming utilizing the King Street Athletic Fields has been submitted for April fourteenth from six thirty PM to eight thirty PM. And whereas Mr. Prado has uh requested the permissible hours of operation to be extended to allow filming and associated operations on the dates listed on the application to accommodate production needs. And whereas the village code provides that the village board may waive certain provisions of the filming code at your discretion. Now therefore be resolved that the board of trustees hereby waives the filming restrictions with respect to hours of operation and days of operation. And be further resolved, the village clerk is authorized to sign and execute any documents necessary to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please?
Second.
And I will point out that um, you know, we, we have granted these in the past. Um, a lot of times it's depending upon where and, where the filming is being done and how it's being done. Uh, this is at our, the lower fields, the King Street Athletic Fields. Um, it's not anything that's going to be disruptive to any residents.
Two and a half hours.
And we also.
Former students of.
Yeah, former student of Blind Brook High School or Blind Brook School District. And we also um recognize that, or have checked to make sure that the field's not gonna be in use at the time by other groups, so.
Yep.
All right, any questions, comments?
Nope.
No.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, administrator's report.
Okay, just a couple of real quick items, so just the, our new tennis and pickleball system and registration went online uh this month and we're getting good numbers already signing up, so please look at that program. Uh, you should have gotten emails about it, we'll send some other emails out to the community and uh it's a nice, hopefully easy system to navigate and you'll be able to sign up right until the hour for any open courts. Uh, April twenty-sixth is Arbor Day and that's also going to be Ashley Weldy Day uh for Rybrook. That was unfortunate passing of Ashley Weldy and we'd like to recognize us, we being the village, the school district and the town of Ry, all want to recognize on that particular day, she, Ashley had such a deep interest in sustainability initiatives, was on our sustainability committee, uh Town of Ry Sustainability Committee, obviously the, the Blind Brook School Board, so very active. And from three thirty, three forty PM that day to six thirty PM, uh, there'll be uh different functions for Ashley uh starting at the Rid Street School Greenhouse to the Town of Ry where they're doing a micro forest, I had to look that one up. And uh then we're gonna do a tree planting in Ry Hills and finish off with a nice community reception over at Crawford Park. So it'd be a nice, a nice day, it's a Friday, Arbor Day is always the last Friday in April. And uh be a nice day to celebrate, you know, her life. And um sustainability committee also has several initiatives going with Greg Rivera's coordinating. On April thirteenth uh is the AJP planting, that's this weekend, so Saturday, right, from what times? Nine to eleven, they'll be uh doing some plantings at AJP, sure. And uh on April twentieth, that will be a seed swap event at the library, we do that, you know, several times throughout the years. And they've done that for multi-years, that's on April twentieth at the library.
Yes, uh, uh, thank you, Administrator Bradbury, so just to, just explain that just real quick. So this Saturday again is one of the two really kind of town sponsored, Town of Ry sponsored, like sustainability events that we do each year, so we always, I always like to make sure the.
We can't hear you.
Yeah, for some reason it's not going. Speak loud.
Yeah, speak louder. Yeah, so this is one of the two Town of Ry sponsored sustainability events, one that's happening this Saturday from nine to eleven at AJP where we just putting in some fresh plants, you know, that, Town of Ry, the city of Ry, as well as the village of Amerenek is also participating. And as, as well as the village of Portchester, so we all just like to pick a site and uh do some sustainable friendly initiatives there. And then the other one that Administrator Bradbury mentioned, April twentieth is the seed exchange at the same, our sustainability committee. Um, we work together with the Portchester Sustainability Committee, so it's a nice collaboration there. And the Portchester Rybrook Library has been nice enough the last couple of years uh to allow us to use their premises for the event. It's always very successful, we like to do about two of those a year, so this is our spring one. And it always is a nice turnout because it's a great location, we have the foot traffic coming in. And we also have often the times people who are in the library who come just to check what, what's going on. And um should the weather be nice, we'll use the outdoors, but um the nice thing about it is that we have the opportunity to use the indoor spaces should the weather not cooperate. But that'll be April twentieth, I'll be posting about it as well and sending notifications to residents on the social media channels as well that we have and, and administrative work, getting our newsletter blast as well.
Yeah, and I should mention this Thursday night, um Rybrook's gonna be highlighted at the beginning of the Westchester Municipal Officials Association Dinner. Um, they're doing a new innovation, uh ideas and innovation uh thing during their reception at time and uh we're gonna be highlighting our school age childcare program or after, after-school program. So it's a, it's a way that we can kind of show off a little bit and also other municipalities can learn what we're doing in case they want to consider similar programs, so. It's nice exposure for Rybrook and thanks to Bert and Kathy, who are both gonna be in attendance as well.
Great. Thank you, Chris. Anything else? Any comments from the public?
Nope.
Come on, Janan, nothing?
Seeing none. Uh, the next meetings of the board of trustees, we have a date change as was approved at a previous meeting for our next meeting. So our next meeting will be April twenty-fourth and then again on May fourteenth. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.